Good evening and welcome to our April 25, 2019 Board of Education Meeting of Prince George's County. I would like to thank Mr. Philip Sawyer Yurchenko, who's a 12th grade student at our Suratsville High School, for the introduction to the board meeting this evening. Before he begins to speak, I would like to ask everyone to turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and the taping of our meeting. Mr. Yurchenko.
Hello. Philip Sawyer Yurchenko. I'm a senior at Suratsville High School. Over my high school career, I have participated in many school activities, some of which include swimming, National Honor Society, and dual enrollment. I have also taken around eight advanced placement courses over my high school career, including AP Psychology and AP Genetics. And this has helped me maintain a Great Burn average of 4.2. I really enjoy science, and because of this, my long-term goal is to become a biochemist sometime in the future. I'm proud to be a senior at Suratsville High School, and I'm ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the April 25, 2019 Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlighting this event include, under the consent agenda, the Board of Education will acknowledge Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, Pupil Personnel Worker Week, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supporters Emphasis Week, School Nurse Day, National Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, the Month of Ramadan, Community Workforce Agreement Pilot, and the Community to School to Prison Pipeline Focus Work Group Proposal. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the April 25, 2019 Board of Education Meeting will begin.
Thank you, Mr. Yurchenko, and please know how proud we are of you as one of our students. Mr. Thomas, would you please lead the board in its prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, thy God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Ms. Berkeley, thank you for your assistance with us in preparing the meeting. Would you now call the roll?
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed.
Present.
Mrs. Boozer Struther.
Present.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Ms. Eubanks.
Present.
Mr. Montero.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Present.
Mrs. Queen.
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Thornton.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, please note the following amendments to tonight's meeting. Item 7.2 has been removed as new business first reader, and item 4.8 under consent agenda has been added to tonight's agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda for April 25?
It's been properly moved and seconded, that the agenda as amended be adopted.
Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of April 9. May I have a motion to approve our minutes of April 9, the board's work session? It's been properly moved that we adopt the minutes of our April 9 work session. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. There's one abstention, Mr. Wallace, let the record reflect that. Those in favor, again, please say aye. Those opposing, no, and there's one abstention. The report of the chair. We have a meeting on May 9, which will start at 7:00. We also have a meeting on June 6 and June 20. And all of our meetings to the public will be held in this meeting, in this building. Those persons wishing to sign up, may please go to our board work site to sign up. A maximum of 15 people will be allowed to speak. I want to say, I joined Dr. Golson today at 11:00 at a very, I'm sure she may say more about this, at a very exciting time for our school system. Employers, and our students, and the staff who work with them were celebrated today. We just have an amazing growing list of partnerships with our schools that are helping our students with their transition to college and to career. We celebrated those students, and they received awards from the school system, and it was just an impressive event. So, to the public, all out there who's supporting our students, we want to thank you for doing that, and please continue to do that. As we, the new language is, as we build a bridge to excellence as a part of developing the blueprint for Maryland's future. That's the new language that we want everybody to start saying. The Bridge to Excellence, a Blueprint for Maryland's Future Led by Prince George's County. Dr. Golson, before I call on you, I was gonna ask the vice chair of the board for a point of personal privilege, but he stepped away. I'll come back to him after your report, Dr. Golson.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the community members who attended our mornings with Monica kickoff event at Starbucks in Woodmore. It was great to hear your ideas and concerns working together so that we can move our school system forward. Our next event will take place in May, and details will be announced and posted on social media outlets, so I look forward to seeing you in the community soon. Thanks to our local businesses who came out for Industry Day on April 17, through our public-private partnerships, school funding program businesses will have an opportunity to partner with the school system to reduce costs and fast-forward timelines for renovations, maintenance projects, and new school construction. We are pleased that our schools will take part in the countywide Growing Green with Pride Initiative next Saturday, May 4, cleaning up and beautifying school grounds with plants and supplies provided by county partners. Later that day, we will announce the 2019 Prince George's County Teacher of the Year Doing Amazing Gala Event at the Hotel at the University of Maryland. Visit our Teacher of the Year webpage to learn more about the nominees and purchase tickets to the gala by accessing our main webpage. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our current Teacher of the Year, Ms. Delisha Myers, from Tulip Grove Elementary School, who's done an exceptional job in representing our employees and our teachers, and just making us all PGCPs proud. National Teacher Appreciation Week will take place from May 6 through May 10. Please take this opportunity to acknowledge your own favorite teachers during that week. And lastly, I want to begin, we will begin our Class of 2019 Prom and Graduation season in a few weeks. We will launch the month of May by celebrating our seniors through a College Signing Day on May 1, and for the first time ever, a Career Signing Day on May 2, which will be held at the Plumbers and Gas Fitters Local 5 Training Center. And then, I also just want to say thank you to the Board of Education members who were able to attend the 2019 Employer/Employee Luncheon that we had today. Thank you to Board Member Williams, Queen Cunningham, Thomas, and Boozer Struther, who were there to support our seniors and their employers.
Dr. Golson, you're not gonna recognize my presence.
You wouldn't let me finish the sentence. And last but not least, our board chair, Dr. Alvin Thornton. You must remember, I'm an educator, so we think quick on our feet. This year was our 36th year of the Employee Luncheon, but it is our 73rd year for conducting that program. And so, I just want to say thank you to our businesses who help to provide out-of-classroom experiences that cannot be taught from a textbook. So, thank you. This concludes my comments. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Dr. Golson, and I now want to recognize our vice chair, Mr. Burrows.
Colleagues, I wanted to just publicly, or I asked you to turn to the screen, and I asked that you, that we congratulate Linda Queen on her wedding. It was such a fun, enjoyable event, with singers and dancers and apple cider. But I wanted to just acknowledge you, colleague. It's an honor to have you here, and congratulations on your wedding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, for that. And Ms. Queen, I hope you enjoy the expensive gift that I sent you. Good. And colleagues, let us now move to our public comment part of the agenda. I would ask our 15 peoples, people who signed up to please abide by the rules and restrictions that you agreed to. The next, the first speaker is Ms. Debbie Litz Fletcher, who is an individual from Unit 1 Negotiations. Ms. Fletcher?
My name is Debbie Litz Fletcher. I'm a teacher. I'm a life mom. My name is Debbie Litz Fletcher, and I've been a teacher employed in, as a special educator in the Infants and Toddlers Program of Prince George's County Public Schools for 31 years. I'm here to share my thoughts on why you can't put students first if you continue to put your professional educators last. Last in compensation in the metro DC area. We need fair compensation for highly-trained educational professionals. This would include honoring any negotiated steps, experience-based pay increases, and COLAs, Cost of Living Agreements, that are negotiated in this agreement. That has not occurred in years past. We negotiate, and then we don't get what we negotiated for. We would like to see new hires limited to the step that their current, that current employees with that level of experience are on, on the salary scale. This would eliminate the loyalty penalty. People that have stuck with Prince George's County in spite of not getting their negotiated steps, and are being asked to train people with the same level of experience that are placed up to four and five years ahead of them on the salary scale. We would like to see you begin to raise compensation to the levels of the surrounding jurisdictions. We are last in the DC metro area. We would like to see us being paid fairly based on our education level, with the median salary of $91,000 across the Unit 1 members, which the Corwin Commission has recommended. This would include 11- and 12-month positions for people who work 11 and 12 months of the year. Athletic directors, school psychologists, school counselors, PPWs, and people who work in federally mandated 12-month programs, such as myself, an infants and toddlers staff member. I have lost 4.5 years of credit toward my pension in the last 25 years because my contract doesn't cover the summer, but I have to work then in order to make a living wage and serve the students in our population as the federal law mandates. Our kids and employees can't wait for less testing and more learning. Safe, clean, adequately heated and air-conditioned and secure work environments. Tuition reimbursement for everyone who is taking classwork to advance their professional capabilities. Smaller class sizes and sensible workloads. Simpler and fairer evaluation of staff. Educator autonomy and voice in policy. And restorative practices in all schools. If you really want to put students first, then you have to stop putting the people who work to educate them in Prince George's County last. There is no blueprint or bridge forward if you continue to pay us less than everyone else.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, for your comments. The next speaker is Samuel Epps regarding Community Workforce Agreements. Mr. Epps is not here yet, and so we'll now go to Ms. Jaron Levy regarding Community Workforce Agreements. Ms. Levy?
Thank you.
And with Ricky Freeman, please prepare to speak after Ms. Levy. Ms. Levy, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening to Dr. Thornton, the members of the board. I'm here to support a Community Workforce Agreement policy by the board. As many of you may know, I used to be a delegate in the, Maryland State Delegate in the House of Delegates. When I served as a delegate, I had, I helped organize a pre-apprenticeship program with the school system and the Local Building Trades Council. It was very highly successful in providing on-the-job training opportunities and classroom training opportunities for local high school students. And I have seen the benefits of Community Workforce Agreements around the country. I think that they can be cost-effective for the local school system, and also present benefits for county taxpayers, and also provide career construction opportunities and career paths for local residents here, here in the county. And I would encourage you to adopt a Community Workforce Agreement policy. I understand you are looking at a pilot program, and I want to stand in support of the pilot program. I have seen them be effective, and I think that it can be effective here in Prince George's County, so I encourage you to adopt that, that agreement. And I think a partnership between our local building trades, the laborers' unions, and others here in the county can yield a lot of benefits for local residents, high school students, and pre-apprenticeship opportunities for students as well. So, thank you for letting me present my views before the council on this important topic. I want to thank, I wanted to thank Dr. Thornton, Chair Board Member Ed Burrows, and the other members of the board who have signed on and co-sponsored this proposal, the pilot program, and also Dr. Golson, and everyone who is providing some leadership on this policy. I think it will yield great benefits for our jurisdiction. So, thank you very much, and I urge your support.
Thank you, Ms. Levy. Our next speaker is Ricky Freeman regarding Community Workforce Agreement, and with Vaughn Thomas, please prepare to speak.
Greetings, Dr. Thornton, and all board members. My name is Ricky Field. I'm a resident of PG County, also a construction laborer, and a member of Luna. Working Union makes a tremendous difference in the, in the construction, in construction industrial. The union provides health care for the workers and their families, also paves a way for a middle-class, a middle-class status, and it provides a future pension plan for the workers. Now, with this pilot, the school system will be creating opportunities for county residents, thus will be the, be a proud moment for our residents and our union members alike. I would like to thank Dr. Golson, Vice Chair Burrows, for their willingness and their vision, for trying something new. Also, to Dr. Thornton, I would like to thank you for your, for your work building majority support among the, among the board, among the board in the future endeavors pertaining this important matter. In closing, it is our hope that this is the beginning of a great lasting partnership between Luna and PG County School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Vaughn Thomas, and if Mr. Julio Palermo would prepare to speak.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton, and the members of the board. My name is Vaughn Thomas. I'm here this evening to thank you for the resolution for creating a pilot Community Workforce Agreement and Abatement System. I grew up in Prince George's County. I attended Prince George's County Public Schools, elementary, junior high, which is what we used to call it back then, in high school. I later became a labor for the laborers' union. This pilot program will help our county residents to work in construction trade, in a construction trade that I am very proud of. Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I'm sorry, Dr. Golson, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, and I would also like to thank you, Dr. Thornton, for your leadership on this pilot. CWA is the first of its kind in the school system, and I know that it will be successful. I would like to thank you very much for allowing me to speak again tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Palermo, and with Roland Roy, please prepare to speak after Mr. Palermo.
All right. Well, you got close. It's Julio Palomo. He did better than most, that's for sure. Good evening, Dr. Thornton, and members of the board. My name is Julio Palomo. I am here tonight to represent Lyuna Local 11. Lyuna has more than 7,000 members in the DC metro area, about a third whom live in Prince George's County. On behalf of Lyuna Local 11, I wish to thank the board and Dr. Golson for your willingness to try something new and support a pilot Community Workforce Agreement on abatement work. I also want to thank Chairman Thornton and Vice Chair Burrows for their leadership on this matter. You both excel at consensus building and creating a shared vision. We at Local 11 look forward to creating jobs for county residents that provide a pathway to the middle class, and participating with the Prince George's County Public Schools on future projects. Thank you for the chance to share my thoughts this evening, and we will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Martin, Martin Diggs, Mr. Martin Diggs, would please come forward regarding investing in good customers. I'm sorry. Did Mr. Roy, Mr. Roy, I'm sorry, Mr. Roy, you're first. Regarding transportation wages, here's.
Hello, board. Roland Roy, bus driver from the Goddard Bus Lot, standing with these fine drivers and bus attendants. We are here tonight because if we don't speak up regarding the concerns of the Transportation Department, no one else will. A transportation questionnaire survey was given to employees, and one of the questions was, should PGCPs guarantee drivers and attendants seven or eight hours daily? We stand here tonight letting you know that a lot of drivers and attendants are not even getting six hours. I've been proudly transporting our kids, of whom we address as our precious cargo, for over 10 years, and my run pays six hours and 15 minutes. It's a shame that professional CDL holders transporting children and bu, and bus attendants can't even be guaranteed eight hours. To the board, we don't know why this department would not pay us for wages for the job that we do. Bus drivers are leaving because they cannot make a living here for the county with six-hour runs, and the attendants getting five hours. And you know who are suffering because of it? Yes, our kids, because buses are running late to pick them up. They get to school late, and because of that lose important classroom time, before our break, spring break, my attendant and I were picking up a child, and a group of kids were waiting on their bus, which was running 35 minutes late. And it wasn't the first time. Little boy asked me, said, "Bus driver, you know when I bus coming?" I said, "I don't, but I don't know, but I'll try to find out." If the drivers are not guaranteed eight hours runs, you are not going to be able to retain them. Because of the shortage of bus drivers, the office staff at the bus lots are covering routes. It would be good if the transportation supervisors be required to obtain a CD, a commercial driver's license to help us cover routes. Remember, great by choice, Mr. David Hill said in a service meeting how important bus drivers are, and that we have a CDL license which is like gold, and he didn't have one. He also stated that on the first day of school, it couldn't open without us. So, I got to thinking, as drivers, how important we really are. If we open school, then we can, thank you, board.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Martin Diggs, investing in public service. Mr. Diggs?
I gotta go behind that. Wow. Thank you for this opportunity. I first want to start talking about this. There's a movie out called Dave. It's played by this guy named Kevin Kline. The plot of this movie is that the president had a stroke, and Kevin Kline was hired to impersonate the person, the president for a short time. While he suffered this major, while he was in this position, he had to save a major amount of money, which in turn creates the money for a program that was being cut. Well, this other guy named Frank Legata, that was already working to do that job in order to cut these programs, got upset because this guy impersonating the president actually saved so much money and saved his program. My point to you is this, and this is no attack, but this is just a point. Monica Golson, the president of the board, you guys are no impersonators, imposters. You guys know what you're doing because we elected you guys into these positions. But some things that I wanted to mention. Ms. Golson, after five days in office, you eliminated 12 positions in central office, which was a good thing. The school board, you had already approved this building project, and you know, I'm cool with that, but what blew my mind is that after you had approved it, this gentleman came back with 21 contractors, and you guys approved this, these are 21 contractors in less than five days. Not saying that it wasn't, that wasn't necessary. If it was necessary, then it was fine. But all I'm saying is that in five days, it was approved, in five days. Now, recently, I seen this commercial on PG County website that, and I quote, all of the people who were actually interviewed in this said, "This is why I stay with PGCPs." With one of the major issues that we having is a shortage of bus drivers and aides, why wasn't a bus driver or an aide on this commercial about why they wanted to stay? Now, look at this other fact. If you want to make sure that you give good customer service, then you have to make sure that the bus drivers and aides who actually deal with our kids on our front line on a day-to-day basis, give us the resources and the tools that we need in order to give them what they need. For example, we have 12 bus lots. We have defibrillators at each of these bus lots. Guess what? We all know what a defibrillator is. We've had no training on these defibrillators on our bus lots, and no one says a thing about it. Money was spent on it. They were there. I don't know if it was guys was forced, that you had, guys had to do it, if it was a federal thing. I don't know. But give us the tools that we need. We have aides that deal with kids. They don't get CPR training. They don't get any training on how to use an EpiPen. So, if you want to have good customer service, you've got to put the money, you got to put the resources into the bus drivers and aides so that we give good customer service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Essence Herndon, and would Angela Arad please prepare to speak? Ms. Herndon?
Good evening to the Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and interim CEO, Dr. Golson. My name is Essence Herndon. I am a bus driver from Goddard Bus Lot. I am here to speak on a subject that has come up before, and it's called proration. We, as bus drivers and attendants, we are 10-month employees, which means by contract we are to work 185 days. When it comes to how we are paid, our paychecks, they take our annual salary and break it up into 22 payments, which equals out to 10 months. Now, I have, when I first came on, me being someone who studied in school, accounting, numbers, math, I'd already done the math as to what I would be getting based on us being hourly employees, according to our contract. When I got my first paycheck, it included my training plus my first two weeks, three weeks in the hole. But when I looked at it, it didn't add up to what my actual numbers that I came across. So, here it is. I've done some basic math. Basically... Basically, for a Step III bus driver, their gross is $1,425.51. That's for two weeks. By the time taxes, benefits, union dues, and 12-month option comes out for those who elected, you are taking home less than half. You would be lucky if you get to $800. If a Step III is $21.19 an hour, at 80 hours, their gross should be $1,695.20. Excuse me. When I broke it down from what is on a pay stub, the $1,425.51 gross, if you break that down through 80 hours, it comes up to an hourly wage of $1,782 an hour. Cost of living goes up every year. Granted, yes, we do get an increase, a step increase, by the negotiations through our contract. We're grateful for that, but it really doesn't make much of a difference. We really don't see much. When we asked if proration could be an option, we were told absolutely not. So what I am asking is that we are put, our annual salary is put in a proper pay according to our hourly wage. So if someone is to make $21.19 an hour, their annual salary should come up to $37,294.40. Break that up into 22 payments. Folks would be a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Rod, you're to speak next, and would Ms. Lucinda Orange prepare to speak? Mr. Rod, please, please come forward.
She's not here.
Not here? She's not here? Are you Ms. Orange? Please proceed.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I did some research on the problems we have been having with retaining drivers. I found some stats that I think are relevant to our success as a group, but it's also critical to point out, because the negative stats that I found are better than what we are experiencing, which is bad. For example, employees feel the job or workplace is not what they expected. There is a mismatch between the job and the person. There are too few growth and advancement opportunities. Employees feel devalued and unrecognized. Employees feel stressed from overwork and have a work-life imbalance. That means they have to work an extra job just to make ends meet. There is a loss of trust and confidence in management and leaders. These issues go to the heart of safety for our drivers, our children, and our community. A few other facts I aligned, I found regarding employee retention and its impact on any business is as follows. Over 50% of people recruited to an organized, to an organization will leave within two years. One in four hires will leave within six months. Nearly 70% organizations report the staff overturned has a negative financial impact due to the cost of recruiting, hiring, and training. So in our case, it's worse. Once employees finish training, seven out of 10 are leaving within a month, which is dramatically faster than the average two hours quoted earlier. Also in our case, the employee turnover impacts the coverage of runs and creates an imbalance of staff receiving multiple functions versus others getting the absolute minimum. An example of that is, there are some individuals who receive three to five options of work while others receive minimum options or none, and there is no justification for the decision other than that the management choosing the same individuals over and over again, thus creating an inability for a large group of us to earn more opportunities. Management training is also a necessity and should include cultural sensitivity, managing function versus managing a team or individuals, temperament and listening skills, and inclusion. But the bottom line is, the number of supervisors is an area that needs to be thoroughly reviewed for the budget and role, as we have many chiefs making top dollar while we need more drivers who are leaving in droves and also making pennies. Another thing I found out in regard to retaining workers is, job satisfaction will increase your employee retention rate, create an environment that makes your employees feel like an asset to your company, allow them to feel secure on their job, get their input about rules and changes, give feedback on work performed, and be willing to listen, really listen now, to the concerns of your employees. Chance meetings are good, but do not take the place of actual sitting down face-to-face. Thanks to Mr. Stanton and Mr. Fosse for meeting me face-to-face. And in order to retain talent, you must make them feel appreciated, respected, and worthwhile. Recent studies show that when employees feel undervalued and underappreciated, they look for other employment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orange. Our next speaker is Habib Ajah regarding Muslim Council and Ramadan. I don't see the speakers, so I'll go to the next speaker. He's here? Is that him coming here? Ms. Clark, would you prepare to speak, please? Ms. Michelle Clark, please proceed, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
It's a pleasure to be here today. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Habib Ajah, and I'd like to commend the chair and the rest of you. Unfortunately, I do not know all of your names. I am a board member of PGCMC. The reason why I'm here today, simply to reinforce the reason as to why we think, as Muslims, we need a school holiday when pertaining to the Eid holiday. So I came in here today to support, and I've been in communication, in contact through emails with some of you, and I want to commend Rahila and a number of them who have had, you know, communication on the email. In conjunction to that, there are many other questions will come up, as we have our chair, our president for this organization. In light of that, I'd like to see if the board will be able to entertain an Eid holiday for Muslim students at PGCMC, Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Ms. Michelle Clark. Ms. Clark?
Good evening, everybody. Step restoration. You haven't heard this from me before, I'm sure. Basically, as you well know, we are in negotiations at this point, and one of the key issues with the majority of our members is step restoration. We realize it will cost money. One of the things we could do is cap what step new employees come in at. Or at least, we could be equitable and set up a salary system so that somebody who comes in with 15 years of experience isn't going in on step 16 while the person next door is stuck on 12. It's a matter of equity. We talk about equality and equity for our students all the time. We need equity for our teachers. It's disrespectful to those of us who stayed to pay the loyalty penalty while people who have left and returned or have come in brand-new are where they should be, and we're not. We've been working with the county council as well to try and get extra funding for this. We were there last week for their open mic on Tuesday, telling our stories as to how we've been impacted over the years by not having our steps. Most of you already know, so I'm not going to retell my whole story, but I can give you the extremely abbreviated version. Having moved to this county to be close to work, I bought a house. The value of my house dropped $100,000 two years after I moved in. My salary froze. My mortgage went up. My salary was still the same. It eventually led to foreclosure proceedings, which led me to declare Chapter 13 bankruptcy, not once but twice, in order to keep my house. I am currently out of that, and I'm doing the best that I can, but it also led to something that not all of you know about. When some bullying actions at work and the combination of the problems at home and financially closed in on me, and I felt there was no way out, I took three handfuls of muscle relaxers and never expected to wake up. Thank God I did. And that has given me the purpose to be here, telling you over and over again that your employees need to be made whole. One of my best friends succeeded in her attempt, not three weeks before mine. It's happening. We're hurting. I don't care what you have to do to figure it out. It needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. The next speaker is Jamel Alim Johnson regarding Ramadan. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all the members of the Board of Education, particularly for offering this resolution commemorating the month of Ramadan. And I want to ask the members of the community who came out if they could please stand in place. You don't have to come all the way down here. Just stand where you are. My name is Jamel Alim Johnson, and I'm the president of the Prince George's County Muslim Council. Ramadan is a special time for the Muslim community. In the Quran, Allah says, "Fasting has been prescribed for you, as it was prescribed for those before you, to teach you self-restraint." It is about disciplining ourselves, not only to be better worshippers, but to be better human beings. Islam is one of the fastest-growing religions, not only in the United States, but in the state of Maryland. And the Prince George's area, along with its surrounding environs of DC and Virginia, have been identified by Pew as one of the greatest areas of concentration of Muslims in the country, along with areas such as New York and Detroit, Michigan. Since 9/11, Muslims have had to fend off negative stereotypes and hate incidents, which have only become worse since the election of our 45th president. It includes acts of bullying against students, but not only by other students, but acts of intolerance by staff and principals in the Prince George's County system. We have had to address some of those directly. Maryland and Prince George's County have shown a propensity to embrace diversity and inclusion, which is consistent with this resolution. The Muslim holidays of Eid are currently included on the calendar, Eid al-Fitr and Eid ad-ah, but they are excused absences for the Muslim students and not days that the school is off. I hope that we will take the next step of closing the schools on these holidays, especially since the absentee rates, as we were able to determine, are similar for the Muslim holidays as they are on Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. This has already been done in New York City and Detroit. I hope that the Prince George's County Public School System will follow suit. Thank you very much, and again, we appreciate you offering the resolution and for those who are working with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Donna Clem.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Goldson. My name is Donna Clem. I'm a Unit 1 Building Rep for the Infant and Toddler Program. The Infant and Toddler Program is the front line in early childhood education in Prince George's County. It is a federally mandated program under the Individual with Disabilities Act, I'm sorry, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. Under this mandate, we are required to provide year-round services for eligible children and their families in their homes and daycares. Despite being in existence in the county for over 40 years, we feel we are an island without support from PGCPs outside of the Early Childhood Administration. As we are not a typical school-based program, we have many needs unique to our program that go unnoticed and unmet. The first problem, we are a 12-month program with 10-month employees. PGCPs has declined funding staff positions as 11 or 12-month positions, as most other counties in the state have already done. We do not do ESY services, but rather are mandated to provide the same services during the summer that are provided during the school year. Summer services are crafted together utilizing infant and toddler staff, early childhood staff, and contract positions. As a result, the continuum of services for many families is interrupted with the introduction of new professionals into the family routines. The continuum of services is a basic tenet of the law. Many INT staff work over the summer for the additional pay and because of concern for the families with whom they work. Due to insufficient funding, they are required to do more work for less pay in the summer when compared to the school year pay. Infant and toddler staff lose between one to two months of credit towards retirement every year under the current structure. For a provider with 30 years of service, that represents two and a half to five years of unrecognized service. Our program is monitored by MSD and placed under corrective action for issues that arise primarily from the interruption resulting from using 10-month employees. Our second concern is the environmental and health concerns. Our program is housed in an old and outdated building that is not suitable for children. However, families must bring their babies into a school for assessments, community groups, and transition meetings. There are issues with heating and cooling, potable water, and asbestos tiles that are broken and mold within the building. Lastly, the building designation. Judith P. Hoyer, ECC, is the designation on our building, yet we are not listed on the PGCPs website as an ECC, school, or specialty center. This results in our staff being ineligible for grants and other certifications, which would allow for student loan forgiveness. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks to all who came to speak to us this evening. I would now like to yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of Items 4-1 through 4-8 under the board's consent agenda. Dr. Goldson?
Items 4.1 through 4.8 under the consent agenda requires board approval of the Proclamations commemorating Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, Pupil Personnel Workers Week, Positive Behavior Interventional Emphasis Week, and National Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, a resolution commemorating Ramadan on May 6 through June 3, a resolution adopting pilot community workforce agreements, and a community to school-to-prison pipeline-focused work group proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Let's see now. Colleagues, do you want to? I know that there's interest in 4-7 and 4-8. We want to separate these out, 4-1 through 4-6. A motion is in order regarding those.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board adopt 4-1 through 4-6. Those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Dr. Thornton, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
The vote was not taken. I want to recognize Ms. Ahmed.
I appreciate that, Dr. Thornton. Folks, I'm so excited for this resolution commemorating Ramadan, can I tell you? Colleagues, for your awareness, I just want to point out, to my awareness, this is the first time that this school district has recognized Ramadan, and that's a big deal, not only to me as a practicing Muslim, but to the thousands of students and staff members and parents and families that observe it. And so I would really much, very much appreciate your support of this, and I want to thank a couple of folks that helped make this happen. The first, first and foremost, the Prince George's County Muslim Council that helped co-draft the resolution, as well as board members, Paul Montero, David Murray, Sonia Williams, who participated in the discussion around this, and as well as our leaders, Dr. Thornton and Mr. Burrows. This was very much a consensus collaborative effort, and again, it means a lot to the Muslim community, myself included. That's all.
Thank you, colleague. Colleagues, now, the vote is on 4-1 through 4-6. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect unanimous vote by the board on 4-1 through 4-6. I will now recognize Mr. Valentine. It is, is it on 4-7 or 4-8?
Uh, it's on 4-7.
Okay. Motion is on the floor regarding 4-7. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Burrows, you want to talk, or is there Ms. Williams?
Sure. Colleagues, good evening, colleagues. I'm so very thankful to author and sponsor the Community Workforce Agreement Pilot. It is so important that we leverage every tax dollar to lift up our own community, to benefit local businesses, minority businesses, and most important, most importantly, the working people of Prince George's County. Tonight, I have sponsored two board action resolutions. First, Community Workforce Agreement, and secondly, Community to School-to-Prison Pipeline. And while on those, while on the surface, those two look like two separate resolutions, our chair reminds us all the time that what happens in the community, what happens with families, has a direct result of what happens in the schools and the school-to-prison pipeline. There's a direct connection between high concentrations of poverty, lack of economic opportunity, and the criminal justice system. To the extent that we can use our own tax dollars to create economic opportunities for our citizens, we have the moral and ethical obligation to do so. Leveraging our tax dollars to uplift our communities will, in the end, help our students and our families in Prince George's County. help our students and our families in Prince George's County. Colleagues, when this was first drafted, it was initially to do all construction projects with all 18 labor unions. Dr. Goldson looked at me like I was crazy, and so since then, we've narrowed it down pretty significantly, but to something that I think will work and be very successful. I want to thank Dr. Goldson, Barry Stanton, Valerie Irvin, for really being open to this idea, and because of your willingness, we will lead the state in this effort. I also want to thank my colleagues on the Board. I want to thank our Board Chair for being a big supporter of labor unions, and all of the cosponsors and sponsors. You know, Dr. Thornton, David Murray, Joshua Thomas, Rahila Ahmed, Belinda Queen, Canard Wallace, Paul Montero, Curtis Valentine, and also Ms. Amaya Page. I think it's so important that when we do contract with businesses and we spend hundreds of millions of dollars over a period of time in contracts, that we hire people from Prince George's County, that we pay them a prevailing wage, that we ensure that they have health care. Health care should be a guarantee, a basic human right, not a privilege. And every single person that we contract with and that works on our projects and that lives in the county should have the ability to have a retirement fund. And so that's so important. And so I'm so thankful to move this onto the record. Wax has already been moved into the record. Thank you, Ms. Valentine. But I do want to thank my colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. The, I just had a couple of questions about the Community Workforce Agreement, in particular about implementation of how we plan to do this. I understand it's associated with the FY '20 work that we have going on for abatement. But there, being in construction and to have worked in both union and non-union work, the challenges with what I do all the time in communities, especially communities of challenge, is making sure that the work that is done in the communities is done by the people that live in the community. And typically, we see that an agreement with the municipality will have a lot of information associated with it. One, a requirement of either the general contractor or the consultants that's leading the development to ensure that they hire a certain number of community folks, and there has to be a tracking mechanism put in place. Requirements, if they don't meet those, if they don't meet the requirement, then there is a penalty. So there's a lot that's behind, you know, ensuring that community folks get the job and that people are not brought in to the community. I've had several times where, in Baltimore, when I was working on, I work in the harbor, where people brought temporary employees from Pennsylvania. They got them an apartment, got them an address, got their license and all of that. How are we going to implement this to ensure that our workers and our labor in our communities will take a benefit of this?
Excellent question, and I would say that is the whole point of this resolution. The entire point of this resolution, currently with our construction projects, people can live wherever. So often, I see people who come into our work sites with Virginia tags or DC tags or even Pennsylvania tags. The whole point of this agreement and agreements like this throughout the country is that those individuals will be from Prince George's County. And so I believe that with this project, over half the workers must be from Prince George's County.
And that's clearly laid out in this?
And so...
Because I didn't see that it was clearly laid out in this resolution. And so those things that we have to sort of understand is, I think this is a mighty, mighty resolution. And there is a lot of power that we could put behind this, but we have to be clear on what our decision is going to be and what our destination will be in ensuring that that happens. And so that was one question. The other question was, what is the requirement? Who will be responsible for ensuring that that is happening? We, as a school system, we don't hire, we hire the contractors. We don't do the work ourself. So are we putting that on the contractor? There are just a lot of questions that I have to wrap my head around and get an understanding. So I'm hoping that you can answer those questions.
Absolutely. About three drafts ago, it was actually outlined. It had that over 51% must be from the county. It had that every, that they had to have retirement account, 401Ks, that they had to have health benefits. What Dr. Goldson and I decided would make more sense is for the Board to approve this resolution and to allow her staff to work with the labor union to come up with an agreement on all those issues.
So is this a change to a policy that we're putting in place? I mean, I'm trying, I really have to understand, what are we changing? Or are we just saying, let's go out and do this and see what happens?
Essentially, this is a pilot. There are seven asbestos projects in the next year's budget. We will be entering into, in order to successfully bid on those projects, it must be labor. And those details will be ironed out with Mr. Stanton, with Valerie Irvin, with Dr. Goldson, before we send out RFPs.
Okay. Are we anticipating an increase in the typical cost of those projects? If we say that a typical abatement costs $100 and with these requirements, are we, you know, are we comparing apples to apples and ensuring that we're getting what it is we are expecting to get?
We are not anticipating additional costs, and that I'm very proud of, because currently, we have contractors who don't live here, who don't care about our people, who don't pay our people health care or a retirement account or even prevailing wage, and they charge us change orders and they exceed their budgets. I do not believe any of that will occur in this case. I believe that this will be cost-neutral.
And that's based on, I'm just trying to understand, because if we're saying, get your employees and do what you typically would do versus now you're saying you have to have a retirement account, a benefits and things like that, but it's going to be cost-neutral. I'm not seeing that math in my head.
Just a moment, colleagues. I'm going to now recognize Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'd like to thank many of the same people, Mr. Burrows, your leadership on this, Dr. Goldson, Valerie Irving, all the folks at Lyona. I'm incredibly excited to support this. I think that this is a good-sized first step. I think and hope it's the beginning of a very long partnership with Prince George's County Public Schools. It's refreshing to think about us investing our tax dollars back into our community to know that my neighbors, you know, and the people that live and interact with us are going to be a benefit of their own taxpayer dollars. So this is really the start of a very long and successful partnership. It's something that has worked all across this country, and I'm glad that Prince George's County is going to be the next place to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I also want to thank a number of folks in bringing this to the table. First and foremost, the labor union members that have come tirelessly, week after week, to our Board meetings to testify and say, we are members of the community and we want to serve our community. So thank you for doing that and for being here and doing that. And then the second goes to Mr. Burrows. I don't know, Mr. Burrows had mentioned this briefly. He's worked through many drafts, has worked tirelessly as well to gather support and understanding for Community Workforce Agreements amongst us Board members. And that leadership is very much valued. Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Queen?
First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone. I want to thank Mr. Burrows for definitely bringing this proposal. You guys know without a doubt, I am union all the way, no doubt about it. Retire CWA, nothing is more important to me than union. I truly believe in this. I'm truly a representative of what the benefits would do as I would be able to retire at 45 with full benefits. So I know union work. I know union has quality employee, because I am definitely one. The training I have gotten from unions with quality customer service, with personality traits, so much more, far better. And if we look at a lot of our schools and a lot of things that's failing as I've been walking around, if we had union fixing these schools and building some of these schools, we wouldn't have some of the issues in the regular schools we have for our new schools, and I'm going to tell you that. I am so disappointed at these schools and at these contractors. We need quality workers and quality job, and I can tell you, our unions are the ones to do it. So I am so, so behind this, and I'm so proud that we are actually going to take advantage of people who live, who work, and play within our county, but not only who live and work and play, but they pay their employees good. They won't be coming here saying they're about to lose their homes. They won't be saying that, because unions pay their employees good. Inspector our contractor union, so I'm so proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. And a final speaker before we vote is Mr. Burrows. Was there a light? Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I'll call on Mr. Valentine. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, and I also appreciate this resolution, Mr. Burrows. And I agree with the pilot. I'm going to vote in support of it. I do have one friendly amendment. It's in view of some of the things I've heard from Ms. Williams, and I hope that you would accept this. I believe approving this pilot, again, is a very good first step, as my colleague would agree. At the same time, the last sentence of the resolution says that PGCPs shall consider continuation after the abatement project. I would just have one friendly amendment. I think this is a great opportunity for us to use our work group and to amend this to include that we would, we may consider that after review of our work group, which would, over time, be able to review the cost-effectiveness of this program, the lessons learned from this program, but also be able to review certain reports on how the program went. And so we would move forward with the pilot, but as a body, we can review how well that the pilot worked before we agree on any continuous improvement. So I agree with the policy. I hope you accept this friendly amendment.
Mr. Burrows?
Mr. Valentine, I accept it as friendly. And I think I'm so confident that Lyona will produce and our Prince George's County residents will rise to the challenge, that there will be a successful evaluation. And so I have no problem with evaluating it. And hopefully, we can send that evaluation to other school districts and they can follow our lead.
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on the amendment, is on the motion as made by Mr. Valentine and the friendly amendment accepted by Mr. Burrows. Please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Mrs. Boozer Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Uvanks? Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Board Member Curtis Valentine, for that amendment. That makes me say yes.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes. Thank you. Let the record reflect the unanimous vote. Colleagues, the next item is Community to Schools Prison Pipeline Focus Group. Mr. Burrows, as the proposer of this, you may now make your comments.
I'd like to move this. Start off by moving this for discussion, but I've still moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the Prison to, the Community to School-to-Prison Pipeline Work Group proposal be adopted. Mr. Burrows, at the outset, I'd like to ask if you would accept a friendly proposal, which, as you know, the policy 8100 does require that all work groups have resumes and membership. So would you accept a proposal that we adopt this proposal with the requirement that those items come back to us on May 9 for a vote by the Board?
Absolutely. If we can move forward today with this vote and on May 9, I can bring resumes. Absolutely. Let's agree to.
Thank you. That is the motion on the floor for discussion. Any comments? Mr. Burrows?
Colleagues, I want to once again thank Dr. Thornton. Really, when I sent him the draft of this, and when he sent it back, 80% of it was read. And I'm reminded that he's a college professor. But I want to thank you for the hours that you must have spent on this document. I want to thank my colleagues for their support. I do believe that Prince George's County can lead the state in dismantling the School, the Community to School-to-Prison Pipeline. The way that we treat our students who fall short of our expectations says a lot about us. I'm reminded that not too long ago, Prince George's County arrested more students than Montgomery County, Baltimore City, and Charles Counties combined. The students were arrested as early as 7th grade, and nearly 70% of the students were at or below the poverty line, and that 60% of the students were arrested for assault or fighting or disorderly conduct. I have a passion for our alternative schools. And for those of you who don't know, the alternative schools are for students who are either expelled, long-term suspension, maybe arrested. And so I'm hopeful that this work group will just truant. I'm hopeful that this work group will look at how do we wrap our arms around these students? How we leverage county resources so it's not just the school system, but county government? How do we ensure that we direct mental health services, behavioral specialists, to places that need it? And that we don't create records for students unnecessarily, but we catch it early on. I sat on the Expulsions Committee for quite some time, and it was, one thing that stood out to me on that committee is that generally, if a student's getting expelled in high school, I see a string of suspensions in their elementary school and even more suspensions in their middle school. So we can predict, in a way, what students need, what interventions. And so I'm very honored to move this, and I thank my colleagues for their support.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Thomas?
I wanted to just start by commending Mr. Burrows for putting this forward and also for commending us all as a Board for moving forward with actually beginning our work groups. This is something we've been talking about for months, and now we're finally putting it into action. And this is the first work group that we hope is going to come to life. And we all can agree on how important this is. As a former teacher myself, who had students who were arrested, having students who were victims of gun violence, this is an issue that just rings very close to home for me and for many of our teachers and employees within the system. And I also want to just thank you, Mr. Burrows, for being receptive to feedback from colleagues and being open to adjusting your motion accordingly. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to appoint a clarity to make sure that the amendment also included a timeframe for the Focus Work Group.
That was the friendly amendment that he accepted, which will come back on the 9th. Ms. Queen?
Good evening again. I just want to say that I am so, so proud of this Community Work Group that's going to be proposed. And I just want everybody to listen to me and listen to me good. Our children are kids. They're kids. They're children. They're minor. They have young minds. They're adolescents. They're young people. They're infants. They still a child, a child. We're expecting them to be perfect. They're not. They will make mistakes. They will make mistakes. This is a learning environment for them. How dare we have so many high numbers for the School-to-Prison Pipeline for us to be arresting our children, suspending our children, expelling our children, not realizing they are children. We are to forgive. My faith say, we are to forgive over and over. But we are not a forgiving school system. We got to change some things, and this is a way of changing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Mr. Wallace?
I don't know how I can follow that one. I'm going to try my best. Mr. Burrows, I thank you so much for bringing this forward for the community to discuss. As someone who is Chair Two, I've called on Focus Work Groups in the past. I know that the work ahead is going to be long, is going to be much worthy for this Board to discuss. I sit in a unique position, because on the west side of the district that I represent, I have an alternative school. And on the east side, I have the Incarcerated Youth Center, where so many of our students are, right now, five miles, less than five miles away from here, are sitting right now in jail because of the lack of action from this Board around this key initiative. I look forward to working with you, Mr. Burrows, on this Focus Work Group and the work that we can do for our students in the future and even those who are dramatically impacted from our past lack of action. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Page?
Um, I would also like to thank Mr. Burrows for his hard work and dedication, but I would also like to thank some of the community members that have been working hard in the background, um, that a lot of people don't see and recognize, that also inspire me, um, and fuel my passion for restorative justice. I just wanna name a few, uh, Shaunice Bemero, Jana Parker, Marissa Thompson, Nita Patel, and so many more people that work in the background, um, for restorative justice. Um, and I'm glad that we are recognizing that our job as a school system goes beyond just educating students academically, but developing their character as well. So I feel like this is taking a great step in the right direction, um, and ensuring that students are being educated with their character. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page, and, um, Mr. Burrows, did you like, come, come on again? Please.
Just wanted to ask Ms. Edra Spire if she could stand up, uh, from Fort Washington. Uh, she came actually to speak, but, um, so many people signed up, and she couldn't make, can't get on the list, but on the ninth, May ninth, please come back. I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done in the community and around this topic. You certainly have a passion for, um, you know, young people, and young people who make mistakes, and you believe in them, and so, uh, I will certainly hope that you allow me to submit your resume to serve on this work group, not to put you on the spot, but... Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, I would like to say how, uh, much I enjoyed, uh, working with, uh, the vice chair of the board on this initiative. One of the things I brought to, um, his attention, and reminded myself, um, in nineteen eighty-five, this school system, uh, initiated a similar work group, it wasn't called a work group, it was called a, a task force. The, the title, which is historic, and the first thing I'm gonna recommend, as I did to Mr. Burrows, is the first thing the work group should do is go back and look at, from peril to promise, the status of black males, uh, in the Prince George County public school system, because much of the issue that is being identified here is a black male specific issue, and now Latino male, lower income issue. So I'm very pleased that Mr. Burrows has, uh, surfaced that, I look forward to working with him on that, but I'm raising that because we already, already know so much because of what we have done. The state of Maryland, as you know, uh, this is not a problem unique to Prince George County. It is a, an extension of our demographics and some of the challenges that we face as a result of that demographics. Our work will inform the state as it grapples with this major issue, and that's one of the joys that I think will come of this, in terms of dealing with disproportionality and discrimination and expulsion and suspension. So I, I encourage our colleagues to support, uh, our vice chair's initiative, uh, support it unanimously, because this is something that is critically important. And with that, uh, we'll call the roll. Please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Boozer-Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Thornton?
Aye. Let the record reflect a unanimous vote, and thank you, colleagues. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for an introduction, uh, of items five-one through five-eight under budget consent agenda. Dr. Golson?
Items, items five point one through five point eight under budget consent agenda requires board approval of final acceptance and payment for projects at Thomas Pullen Middle School and Thurgood Marshall Middle School, a contract award for the USDE Teacher and School Leader Grant, fiscal year twenty twenty non-resident tuition rates, fiscal year twenty twenty facility usage fees, May two thousand nineteen expenditure requirements, fiscal year twenty nineteen financial review, and fiscal year twenty twenty summer school resident tuition rates.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, please, let's separate out five-seven and have a vote on five-one, um, through five-eight with the exception of five-seven. Um, a motion is in order regarding those.
Some of...
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board, uh, adopts five-one through five-eight with the exception of five-seven. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We'll go now to five-seven. Yes? You have a question? Okay. Ms., um, Ms. Williams?
I just have a question on five-three on the, um, on the grant, um, actually, and on five-five. On five-three, what happens next with the grant? Is it going out for RFP, or, that's the, um, the teacher, the TSL grant?
These, it's already gone out for RFP, these are the selected vendors, and then, um, if approved, we'll follow it with the vendors to begin the work.
Okay. Um, I think that's great. I was just trying to follow the, the process on the procurement, um, website, and I, I just couldn't find the RFP, so I really didn't know what was happening. Um, the, the other question is on five point oh-five, which is in regards to the facilities' use. Um, where are we with working with our black fraternities and sororities that support our students, um, on their total cost to use the schools? Um, and it's more in regards to the insurance requirement that kicks their, their total costs to be very high.
Actually, I tried to address the issue that was brought to us at the beginning of the school year, I wanna say October, by our fraternities and sororities, by allowing them, um, to utilize our buildings as long as it was aligned with our systemic priorities. Um, if they wanted to use the facility, for example, SAT prep course that they were offering for our students, then we would cover the cost of that facility use. Um, but I did not cover the cost if they wanted to hold membership meetings for their sororities and fraternities, and that letter was issued to allow that to happen. It did not cover the insurance component piece of it, though, but I do allow them to use the facilities that we cover.
Okay, for student support services, basically. Um, and so, is that letter the MOU that we've been working on for a couple months?
No, that's separate. Actually, so I issued a memo, I can send it to the Board of Education, so you have a copy of the date, um, time passes me, but I want to say it was February.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dr. Golson, I just had a question on five point zero-eight. I didn't want this to sneak by in a unanimous multi-item, uh, approval, but if you could just shed some light on the, the outstanding proposal that your team has put forth around summer school tuition rates, and, and I know we're gonna be talking about equity a little bit later tonight, but how equitable this action is?
Yes, thank you. At the beginning of the school year, when I first, um, took this job, we were, we received communication from ACLU to review our summer school rates, and the amount of money that we were charging our students across the board to receive those services. Um, I then worked with our team to identify what the rates were across the state of Maryland, reviewed ours, and realized that there were some inequitable, um, rates that we were charging our students, and so by looking at what we offered, um, last year, and previous years, looking at what other local education agencies offer, um, we then came up with amount, with a rate, um, that we will begin to utilize if approved tonight, that will ensure that our students can afford summer school if by chance they need to take summer school in order to ensure that they remain on track for graduation. It takes into account students who have been identified, um, as free and reduced meal applicants, and allowing them reduced tuition, um, and it's for the, any number of courses that they need to take for summer school. In our previous policy, we only allowed it on one course for some reason, um, and this takes, removes that barrier. There were also inequitable amounts in terms of whether they took online courses versus in-person, we removed that barrier as well. So we charge now a flat rate for any, um, credit recovery courses, um, and then take into account, as I stated before, those students who aren't free and reduced meal applications.
Thank you very much, Dr. Golson, colleagues, I, I asked for your approval of five point zero-eight. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Queen?
Dr. Golson, I, um, have a question concerning facility use form, um, civic associations. How is this gonna affect civic associations who are not HOA, that they really cannot force people to have dues, and they really can't afford to pay for facility use forms? So that was my first question.
Yes, so actually, we cover the cost for civic associations who need to utilize our building to hold their civic association meetings, as long as they have no more than fifty-one members for the meeting. That information is posted on our webpage, it also outlines the procedure to do that and who to contact, so that we can cover the insurance component piece, which is typically what they can't cover. Um, and so we have, I want to say twenty organizations so far, civic associations, civic associations who are utilizing that process now.
Okay, and my, my next question is, and it's a big question, as, and I've sent it to you today, but I don't know if you got it yet. I've been visiting schools, and you know, and, um, after talking to a couple of principals, their schools are being used, but I see a lot of issues in the school. So we're renting these buildings out, and one of the principals said her school is used all year long, and sometimes the teachers can't even get back in on time to set up their classes, but I look at the failing things in the school, if the paint and the walls and everything falling, so if the school is being used and people are paying to use it, why isn't the money being invested back in the schools? So we're charging these fees, do the fees we charge for the schools go back into that school? Because that's where the wear and tear is going at, it's going into that school. So I need to know, the money are we collecting for the use, is it being invested back into the schools that are being used?
So the quick answer to that response is yes, but it's important to note that those funds are collected and then placed in our operating funds, our operating budget, that money then goes back to our building services staff, who then repairs those, who repairs our facilities. What you see here presented before you today, though, only allows us to make sure that we break even, not that we're covering the cost of facility use where we were covering the cost when organizations were using it and not paying enough to cover that. You'll see it broken down on the board action summary for negotiations and services, so when we say for negotiated areas, that really is for employees', um, fees. So we have many of our employees, building services staff, who work on the weekends to open the building, make sure that they're there, they're to provide services, set up the facility for the people using it, break it down, and then clean the building in preparation for students and staff to return on Monday morning.
Okay, so my question is, and I'm gonna use, for example, Ernest Jess, which I was just at, um, their school is not even twenty years old, and the, the gym floor is worn, the floors are worn and cracking, and I look, and the, the building is used so much, almost ten to twelve months out of a year, they don't, really don't get a break, but I don't see the money being invested back into that school. I think it's important to me, and I know it's definitely important to the community, that if the building is being used, money is being invested back into the school. I hear you saying, 'cause it sound like the county is going into one big budget, no, it needs to go back into that school. I think that's one of the biggest issues we have in the county right now. If that school is getting a big use, then money needs to be invested back into that school to repair the wear and tear, 'cause there's a lot of wear and tear on that new school.
That wear and tear, we do cover through our building services staff. So we don't ask that our building supervisor repair the floor, what we do is then repair the floor ourselves through our, one of our shops that we have in building services, and that's why the funds go directly there. It's important to know, I'm sure that that gym floor has had some wear and tear, because we are now into the eighth month of school, um, and heading toward the end of the school year, but I guarantee you, when you return to that building in August, that floor will be amazing, because our staff works extremely hard in the summer to make sure that our facilities are back up to par when our students return.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Um, Ms. Williams, was your light on again? Please.
Well, my first question is, which, which item did we pull out? Was it five point seven?
It's, uh, five-seven.
Okay, I'll wait for that to come up.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows, you wanna wait for five-seven, or you wanna... Colleagues, the vote is on five-one through five-eight with the exception of five-seven. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect a unanimous vote. Uh, a motion is in order regarding five-seven for discussion.
Some move?
It's probably the move and seconded, that, uh, we adopt five-seven for discussion. Mr. Burrows?
Uh, colleagues, um, this podium was actually blocking Jana Parker during the school-to-prison pipeline debate. Ms. Parker, I hope that you will also serve, um, on that task force, you've been a very committed leader, you've actually already started doing the work, and so it would be a real asset to have you. Uh, as it relates to five-seven, um, colleagues, um, I decided a long time ago that I couldn't vote for anything related to a severance, um, and so, in keeping with that, I'm gonna vote no. I, you know, I have no strong stake in this, other than to vote my conscience, and so I will be voting no on five-seven.
Thank you, colleague. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Um, this is one of my favorite topics with our previous CFO, so, um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for putting together the, um, the regular report that shows our actual expenditures. For us to do our job, our fiduciary responsibility, it's important that we understand how our budget moves throughout the year, so having those actual costs laid out, um, two months behind is great to keep us on point. So, um, and I appreciate the, the, the chart that you provided us with the explanation, 'cause as you can see, I have a lot of notes, and the chart answered a lot of the questions. Um, so, the first question is about, it's about the movement of all these dollars. We, we put, we put a lot of time and effort into pulling together a budget that helps us support our, um, our goals for that year. And in this, this chart shows that we're moving a lot of dollars from category to category based on these different sources and uses. Um, the one thing that I hope this is, is it, will this become, um, the framework for which we're looking to do our budget next year? Because we're, we're moving five million from, um, category one, we're adding a million to category two. I think that if we're moving this, this amount of money, we have to look at those pieces that make up the category ones, twos, and threes, and so on, so that we don't have to do this much work. So, is that what we're planning to do with this?
Yes, I, I think that, uh, as we went through this process over the last month and a half, uh, I was actually very encouraged by this, because what we're seeing in the movements now are very similar to the changes that, uh, we made through the budget process, through the proposed and, uh, board requested budget. Uh, the biggest one really is consistently over the years, there's some areas that we have under budgeted, and in the narrative here, we've really outlined what those are, and, uh, the way that we've handled those has been through these financial reviews each year, and with most of that money coming from salary laps. Uh, in the budget, as, uh, it stands right now, the, uh, Board of Education requested budget, there's an additional twenty-three million dollars added to the salary lapse number, which really allowed us to budget some of these areas higher. Uh, the ones specifically that have been, uh, addressed, the larger ones include, uh, cross-the-board overtime and, um, uh, supplies for maintenance. Uh, there are still other areas, uh, including, you'll see in here, the non-public tuition for, um, uh, non-public tuition, where the rates have gone up for years, and we haven't really budgeted enough to make up for that, that we'll have to continue to look at, uh, moving money towards there in future budgets.
Right, so, I think that as we, when, when the budget is presented to us next year, the, it would be my expectation that category one is reduced by a certain amount, you know, may, may not be five million, but there should be a certain amount. Um, so, based on, on just timing, um, can you talk about the policy that we use in order to move these dollars? Who are we reporting this to? Is this just for us internally, or is this the report that we send to the county council as a part of our budget process?
Yes, so, uh, this, uh, resolution really has two parts. The first is for the, uh, uh, Board of Education to vote this forward, and the second is to allow, uh, the CEO to send this on to, uh, county council to pass. Because of the time that that will take, after the board moves this forward, we will start to move the fongs.
Right, and so that was sort of my second question, is we're up, we're moving up against the deadline. Every year, we have a beginning day, a first day of school and a last day of school, and then we also have our fiscal processes, so this, we are having this put before us at this time, because there is a process and a time in which we have to meet as a system. Um, so, my time is about to run out, and I'll probably come around for round two.
That's fine, Ms. Wallace, I mean, Ms. Wallace. Ms. Williams, uh, Mr. Wallace?
I heard Ms. Wallace, and I said she's at home.
I apologize, my colleague.
That's okay. Ms. Williams is a wonderful woman, and Mr. Williams is a lucky man.
We're on five-seven, sir.
Thank you. I, I had three questions to the administration, and, on the, uh, on the, um, just like there's three attachments on board docs, on this second attachment, there's three line items that I just had some questions on, comments on. The first one was on the pilot program for the bus driver attendance, just a request, a follow-up request for our next meeting to get some data around that pilot program, or if you can speak to it briefly?
Yes, I actually... Yes, I actually provide data to you in the weekly updates. And so you didn't get a weekly update last week, because we were on spring break. But you will see one for the past two weeks in this Friday's update that I provide to the Board of Education members. And you can, because we've placed, because I've placed that update in a rolling agenda, you can actually go back to see the previous weeks as well.
Perfect, thank you so much. My second one was on the compensatory emoluments. I, this has been a, a kind of district-specific, maybe not county-specific, around our language immersion programs. And if there are emoluments available for staff members, if they so choose and have a cohort of interested students and parents who want extended learning opportunities, if children are involved, I'll use my district, overlook Spanish immersion. If students need a little bit more time, and their Spanish teacher is willing to stay after school and do a tutoring course or after-school club to have an extended learning opportunity, or even parents are interested in helping their children with their class and homework, do we have those opportunities available for those educators through a monument?
So emoluments are used for clubs and service organizations after school. For tutoring, that will be considered a second assignment, and the principal will have to use their school-based budgeting funds to use for that.
But if they form a Spanish club?
If they form, form a Spanish club, and they meet every Wednesday to speak Spanish, and then each school is allotted a certain number of emoluments, and, and the principal designates that teacher to serve as the sponsor for the Spanish club, then yes, an emolument can be used for that.
Perfect, thank you so much. And my final one is just following up on Vice Chair Burrows' overall comment about this, this package around the grievance and settlements line item. Could you speak to that? I got two minutes left.
Sure. So there is a line item in this request that allows us to pay for a previous settlement agreement that was established prior to this school year, to, prior to the start of this school year, for previous leadership that will cover that employee's payout, and for the sick leave and annual leave for another employee that was released.
Thank you so much, and I just have to, colleagues, I just have to, and to the community, I have to express my continued reluctance around this topic and around what kind of put our county through an era of, I won't go that far, but, but I would agree. I think moving forward, that the community and every elected official, quite honestly, in this county, needs to rally together around making sure that we have consistent and competent leadership at the very top of this very important organization. I have been very upfront with my support of our current interim CEO, and I hope that many of us in the community, elected leaders on down to the average citizen, can recognize the great work that she has done with an interim level, and that it needs to continue for however long that this board decides that she needs to stick around. I'll leave my comments for the remaining part of this academic year.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. Chief Herbstrein, I just want to commend you first and foremost about the way that you broke everything down. This is one of the most comprehensive financial documents that I've seen. I read it, and I looked, I said, I understand every single word. And so I really appreciate that, and I want to commend you on that. I wanted to build off of what Mr. Burrows had said and, and what Mr. Wallace had said about the money as it relates to our former superintendent. I understand that there's money in this that's being transferred within this, this proposal for the purposes of paying out that severance. I'm very much against the, that severance package. I wanted to ask, what would happen if we didn't transfer the money?
Dr. Gosson, if you'll respond. Don't think we have the option not to, to pay the severance, but you can talk.
I think this is one where you have a contractual obligation. And to speak to the contractual obligation piece, I don't have that information. I would say your Board Counsel would have to go through the specifics of that, because I actually was not part of that process.
It would, it would be a breach of contract, colleagues.
So then, if it, so is it not possible to ask for a friendly amendment to transfer everything except that amount and vote on that separately? May, Ms. Williams, would you accept that type of a friendly amendment? Okay. All right. Okay, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve item 5.7 for all transference except for the amounts related to the severance package for the CE, the former CEO.
A second. Colleagues, a substitute motion is on the floor to approve all items included under 5.7. Colleagues, if you would, Mr. Valentine and colleagues.
I think we need to, we need to get advice from counsel.
Just a moment, just a moment. Colleagues, if you would, Mr. Valentine and Mr. Murray, if you all would, please. A substitute motion is on the floor to separate out the item related to the severance for the prior CEO from the other items. Mr. Lucci, do you have a comment?
Yes, there is a binding agreement between the school district and the prior CEO, and so if it's not funded, there would be liability on behalf of the school system for not complying with the agreement.
Question.
Let's see, Ms., so that's, that's your advice to, to me as chair, in terms of the interpretation.
Correct.
And I do support that, but even though the board can in fact act at its pleasure.
A question for him.
The motion, yes.
I hear you say it's a binding agreement. Is it not a binding agreement for there's steps that we have not paid?
Just a moment, Ms. Queen, that's out of order. That's out of order. The motion is, is on the floor. You've heard, you've heard the, the legal counsel advice, which I do support, but the motion is on the floor, and I will now recognize Ms. Williams. You're on round two, a separate issue, and I'll recognize Mr., I'll recognize Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and thank you, colleagues, for voicing the same concerns that were going through my mind as well. Though I understand that there are some, some legal ramifications at play. Again, I, I think Ms. Queen, though it may, though it may have been out of order, is, is very much so founded in, in her statement. We have been hearing from teachers, week after week, from school support, school, school service employees, bus drivers, that are waiting for them, themselves to be fairly compensated. Yet, unfortunately, due to actions of many folks that aren't sitting at the table here today, we are choosing to, to pay an individual who should, who, who is taking money that should be going to employees who rightfully earned it and deserve that. And so with that being stated, I, I also cannot support this, being a part of this transfer, but I also support Ms. Ahmed's recommendation to, to approve this and, and vote separately on that specific grievance.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Burrows, Ms. Williams, yours is on this, a separate issue, is that right? Same issue? Unrelated to the amendment, okay, unrelated to the motion. Mr. Burrows.
Colleagues, the, the, Ms. Ahmed's motion is not whether or not we're gonna vote for or against the continuation of the severance. Her amendment is simply bifurcating that one issue from the other issues, so that members can vote for 90% of this package, and just not that, you know, not that one part of the package. We do that all the time, on the consent agenda, on the budget consent agenda. We separate our items so that things that members agree to prevail, and, and things that members don't agree to, they can vote their conscience on.
Mr. Burrows, let me clarify, that, that is, that is completely in order. So that's not the point of debate. We are voting to separate out that issue, and we'll vote on the merits. I want you to make clear about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, you know, I absolutely concur. I mean, I think that's, all this motion does is allow there to be separation, and so.
Thank you, thank you. Colleagues, let's do this, then, and then we can proceed back to the issue. Let's vote on the separation of the severance issue. So what we're voting on is all items in 5.7, with, with the exception of that particular item. Okay? Those in, yes, except that particular item. Okay, well, Ms. Queen, we're only talking about everything else except the severance. Ms. Queen.
I have questions. My question's for the lunch and recess monitors. I, I see the total on here, but is this total for the lunch and recess monitors that we already have? Or is it gonna add more?
So this is to pay employees for the current year for the time that they have already worked as lunch and recess monitors at $15 per hour, and for the rest of the year at $15 per hour. It's not to change the current practices in terms of how many we have.
Then, okay, then my, my next question I have, and let me go back to it, it was, it was something to do with transportation. It is something on here about transportation, we're gonna pay some money, I guess it's a pilot program for transportation. Can you explain that program, the money needed for that?
Yes, that's an incentive program we started in February to try to get bus drivers to come to work, to get more bus drivers available to run the routes, so that we can have more bus drivers available for routes. So we gave them an incentive pay, and probably an average of about 400 and some have taken, have used that incentive pay.
Okay, and I'm sorry to touch you off, but you know, we on the time. My next thing is under maintenance supplies, it's on here twice. One is maintenance and one is plant operation. And I have no problem with the money, you guys, but we gotta get better supplies in the school system. Our schools are really dirty. We try to go green, but green, but it's not clean in the schools. I've been in the schools lately, the bathrooms still smell like piss. It's no Pine-Sol, it's no Febreeze. If we're gonna invest more money in supplies, we need supplies that work.
Is that it, Ms. Williams?
That's it.
Okay, I mean, Ms. Queen. Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. My question was around the 27 million in instructional salaries that was, I guess, underspent relative to allocation. That's, that's solely due to, to teacher salary laps, is that correct?
Yes, that's broken down a little more on, in Appendix B, the larger sheet in there, but 26 of that 27 million is, is specifically from laps.
And is that due to, to teacher vacancies, or what do you attribute that to?
So it's all employees that are in the instructional salary category, it's their vacancies.
So I guess my, my broader question is just around, when we think about our teacher vacancies, when we think about our class size ratio, how is it that we can allocate 27 million more in teacher salaries than we actually paid out? And when I think about the cost of putting teachers on their step, those numbers start to get a lot closer when we look at how much we didn't allocate in the last year alone. And so I understand the number is what the number is, but I guess I can't understand how we could be so far off in what we allocated versus what we spent for teacher instructional salaries.
We can break out in here for, just for your information, I mean, the board's information, so you would know how many of these are really teacher. And because in this category, it's not just the teacher of record that's in front of our students, and that's a small number compared to this.
So I guess, colleagues, I would just preface this as we think about the budget vote in June, whether those vacancies were teacher vacancies or other higher-up instructional vacancies. It shows that there is, there is money on the table that we could, as a board, band together and decide that we are going to pay our teachers. And so that's something that I'm gonna be very focused on, come the budget vote in June.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, come on in.
Yes, please.
I would like to point out, as we do start looking towards 2020, that of that 23 million has already been added to the lapse projection to budget for other priorities, including compensation. So that is a step for next year towards what Mr. Murray's talking about.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to clarify, when he says step, he doesn't mean a step on a scale, pace scale. He means like moving forward. I'm saying that because we're in negotiations, and I don't want a grievance.
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is, is on separating out. It's the separation issue that we're, that we're voting on? I'm sorry? No, I just want to make sure that all we're doing now is voting on the separation. We'll go back to the substance after we've done that. Colleagues, the vote is on the separation. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Mrs. Boozer-Struther?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen? Mrs. Shepherd? Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Thornton?
No.
Six and As? Six Is?
The vote to separate is, is, is not carried. We'll go back to the main motion, which includes the severance. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chair, I had a clarification question. What was Ms. Shepherd's vote? Okay, thank you.
We'll go back, go back to the main motion, Ms. Williams.
Back to the sources and uses chart, Appendix B. There is a utility savings. Is that an actual savings? If so, how did we come up with that savings? Are we doing some green stuff? Do we have solar panels or something?
I wish that we could say that this was caused by that, but this is really, the temperatures this year, I think, contributed more to it than anything.
That's, that's a large savings. I'm thankful for the weather. The next question is regarding the early notice of retirement incentives. Can I get a follow-up on, on, similar to what you're gonna do with the teachers, just to find out who, who is separating from us early? The other question is about inter-project realignment. Can you provide it some, provide some additional information on that? What is that involved? It wasn't very clear on the, this was in the agenda. This was a part of the agenda item. I think it's number three.
So these are smaller amounts within programs that we transfer between different categories, and we could provide more data on exactly what that was. It wasn't at the level of initiatives that we really outlined clearly here.
If we could, if I can get some follow-up on that. My last is just a comment on the diploma covers at $30,000. There was an increase in $30,000. When you connect all the dots of what we have going on every year, typically, we graduate, graduate about 7,200 to 7,300 students a year. Last year, we graduated 200 more students, which I think something we should celebrate, being that we were under such scrutiny in our graduation practices, and it's showing up in here, in the budget. And, and, you know, in diving into what we're, we're here to do, it's important that we connect all the dots. So the $30,000 increase on the diplomas, I'm assuming that that's what it was associated with, with graduating those 200 additional students than we have in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Colleagues, the vote is now on the, the main motion of 5.7. Oh, I see, Mr. Thomas. And Mr. Burrows, would you, would you like? Okay, just gonna call the question. After Mr. Thomas, the question will be called. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the question that I wanted to pose, I mean, I want to preface, may, may be out of order, so please feel free to dismiss if, if that is so. But it is in reference just to the previous motion, and it was just a question to colleagues who were not in favor of separating. Again, as.
It is out of order.
It is out of order.
It's out of order.
Okay.
Mr., the question has been called. Please call the roll on the main motion, which is to approve 5.7. Call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Mrs. Boozer-Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
No.
Mrs. Queen?
No.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
Seven ayes? Five nays?
Dr. Golson, can you bring this matter back to us on the ninth for consideration after we discuss it? Was it too late? I thought we needed eight votes. Only when the student is not involved? Okay, I'm sorry. Motion passes, and thank you, colleagues. Dr. Golson, I'll now yeard the floor to you to introduce items five one through five eight under budget consent agenda.
We just completed five one through five eight, so I am going to present.
Six one and through six eight?
Yes, item six point one through six point eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to separate out at the request of our student board members, six one and six four. So, Dr. Golson, if you'll introduce all of them and we'll separate them out. And six eight. Go ahead, Dr. Golson, I'm sorry.
I am recommending items six point one through six point eight.
Right.
Under Governance Second Readers, Requires Board Approval of Textbooks for Advanced Placement, United States Government and Politics and World History, Health, Mathematics, Reading, English Language Arts, Computer Science, Medical Science, World Languages, and Board Policy zero one zero one.
Colleagues, a motion is in order regarding six two, six three, six five, six six, and six seven. Proper move and seconded, the adoption of those items. Hearing no discussion, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We will now discuss six one. Ms. Page.
So I have a couple of questions, but we're short on time. So just for, this is directed to either Dr. Libby and/or Dr. Hall. So just for clarification purposes, with reference to six point zero one, these textbooks were under the advisement or created under the advisement of the Materials Evaluations Committee, right?
Correct.
Okay, and who was on the Materials Evaluation Committee?
Parents, teachers, center office staff, but we can send the list to you.
Okay, and we're using two textbooks now compared to the one textbook that we're currently using. So I wanted to know what, if any, considerations to neighboring jurisdictions were considered when selecting these books?
So I don't, we'll have to find out about neighboring jurisdictions. I know the committee will send out letters to vendors, to all the textbook companies, and the textbook companies will provide information, and they do presentations and other research. But we'd have to find out if other LEAs in the state of Maryland are using these textbooks.
Okay, so on the document on board docs, it gives two books that they're recommending. Are these not the two books that will be used for the upcoming school year?
Yes, for the upcoming school year.
So these two books were selected by the committee, correct?
Yes.
So based on these two books, were the considerations of whether or not neighboring jurisdictions used?
We have to find that out. I'm not sure if that was part of the committee's charge.
Okay, and were there any cultural considerations when evaluating these books for next year?
Yes, part of the rubric. There are questions about diversity.
So what are the differences between the books that are going to be used next year compared to the books this year with respects to cultural sensitivity?
Okay, we have to break that down for you and send it to you.
Okay, all right, well, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Burrows? Are you on six one?
I can be. I'd just, I'd like to ask the textbook team, if you could really look at Michelle Alexander and Angela Davis as some examples, so please look at those authors who've done excellent work. So Michelle, Alexander, and Angela Davis. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace?
If we're on six point one, then.
We're on six one. You want to come back? Okay, Ms. Queen, we're only on six one.
God tell me we only. All right. I have a question concerning six one, concerning the books, okay? And I know our student, Ms. Amaya, did ask this question. I'm really concerned about African-American history, I'm concerned about Muslim history. And when we say world history, we live in a diverse society. I need to make sure that these books are really, truly diverse. If we're going to really teach our kids history, it has to be the full history, not the regular Caucasian history that we've been teaching over the years that's not acceptable for a lot of our children. So do you guys, can you really tell me that these books are diverse and they reach every student, every culture in our school system?
We'd have to go back and look at the rubrics for the committee, and I'd have to send that information back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Colleagues, the vote is on six one. Those in favor of adoption, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The vote is unanimous. We'll now move to six four. Ms. Page.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Some of them are the same from last time. So how did these textbooks for the ELA, I'm on the six point oh four, the ELA for grades three, four, and five? So how do these textbooks differ than the ones that we currently use?
Same thing. I'd have to do a comparison, and I can send you that information.
Okay, and I would assume the same for the cultural?
Yes.
All right, and my other comment is not necessarily related to the textbooks in itself, but I wanted to state the importance of having students involved in the selection of textbooks moving forward, if it is possible, to implement students on the selection committee, since we are the students that will be sitting here retaining the information. I feel like it'll be extremely important to have student input, especially with what is actually in the textbooks and how it is delivered.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed.
Yes, I just want to thank Ms. Page and Ms. Queen for bringing up these points. I remember being in your exact shoes last year asking these questions. I just want the record to reflect these questions that Ms. Page and Ms. Queen have asked to be follow-up items that are posted publicly on board docs for our next meeting as follow-up items, so that members of the community can also see the comparisons that Dr. Libby and her team will be making for us. Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. The vote is on six four. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The, you said abstention?
Abstention.
There are two abstentions on six four. The rest of the board is voting yes. We'll now move to six eight, Educational Equity Board Policy. Mr. Wallace?
Mr. Chair, colleagues, community, this has been a three-year labor of love, at least for me, around educational equity in Prince George County Public Schools. I first would like to thank, once again, my co-chair in all of this, Christian Rhodes, Chief of Staff for the administration. Him and I met for thirty minutes in 2017, said we got to do something around. Really, he was just appeasing my soliloquy around educational equity. And it came from a discovery when I first joined the board in 2015 that our policy, our board policy on equity, hadn't been touched for nine years, and it was only three sentences long. In a county that is so, as Ms. Queen says, diverse, it was such great needs on many levels to close achievement gaps, we had to look into this, I believe, very deeply. And what we found, ironically, were the same findings that two dozen or so folks on the state level and the Curb and Commission found as well, that our academic achievement gaps were very significant in terms of students who live in poverty, students who have learning disabilities or in special education classifications, and students who have limited English proficiency. And so while we finished well before the Curb and Commission, I'd like to think that they copied our work. They just had to find a way to fund it on the state level. Colleagues, I ask for your support in this policy. This is just the tip of the iceberg. As you know, we had an Educational Equity Task Force that ran the scope of an entire year. I'd like to thank the former and current board members that served on that, former and current administrators who served on that, and a whole host of committee members from the community, from nonprofits, from businesses, that really came in and shared their work on what they do in terms of educational equity in the state of Maryland and in the region. Colleagues, for full disclosure, I did submit this, the work of the Educational Equity Task Force, to our Council of Urban Boards of Education for a potential conference seminar and session. And I'm hoping that with our approval tonight and the work that we do up until September, that we can share the light, shed a light on what the work we're doing in Prince George County throughout the entire nation. So many times we go to these national conferences and the conversation around equity is purely racial, which is understandable and much needed. But in a community and a school district that is ninety-eight, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent student of color, that conversation around equity around the nation doesn't really apply here. We need to talk about socioeconomic inequity, language inequity, and special education inequity. And that's what this policy speaks to, and that's what the Educational Equity Task Force spoke to for a year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams?
Move approval.
It's been, it's been proper move and seconded, that item six eight be approved. Ms. Williams?
First, I'd like to thank Board Member Kay Alexander-Wallace for his work. He has been the engine behind this train in making sure that equity, the conversation about equity is more than just race. And so I appreciate the work. I've seen you tirelessly work to make sure that the right words, the right conversation, and the right work was behind this policy change. So I appreciate your work, and I just wanted to publicly thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Burrows?
Just want to echo those sentiments. Want to thank you, Mr. Wallace, for spending so many months on this and probably over a year, if I remember correctly. And I'm so happy to see that you're returning to the Policy Committee to continue pushing policies like this. There's one aspect of this that I would like to highlight, and that is adverse. Yeah, adverse childhood, I was like, no, I get distracted. Yeah. Adverse childhood experiences, and I didn't even know what that was until Pamela and Belinda and I went to a session at NSBA where they presented on adverse childhood experiences. And so to the extent that a school district can support students early in dealing and coping with the mental health support, I'm all on board. So I hope this policy will lead to serious budget implications or recommendations for how we deal with our young people.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Ahmed?
I also want to echo my thank you to Mr. Wallace for all this work. Y'all, Kennard is so patient. I think that over the past couple of years I've been on the board, he's been thinking and churning out policy after policy for this board in a really amazing way. One thing, one aspect of this policy that I wanted to mention is it requires or it asks for administration to provide a lens of equity for each department that is in our school district. And so I wanted to ask administration, at what point can we see those plans come to fruition as it relates to equity in each department?
So once it has been approved here, then we'll begin the process of creating a mechanism to ensure that we begin this process July one.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. Mr. Wa, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas?
I also just wanted to commend Board Member Wallace for your hard work here. It seems like the story is true across the days, but when I actually first spoke with Board Member Wallace after I was elected, this was the topic of our very first conversation. So this is obviously a long time coming and excited to see what the potential outcomes here are. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And colleagues, I. Ms. Queen? Ms. Queen?
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank Board Member Wallace also. This is so important. If everybody can remember, over two years ago, I was sitting on that side, and I kept speaking on equality and equity in our school systems. And it is so very important to me because I, as a parent who have raised twenty-one kids, I've seen the difference. As a community activist, I go to different schools and I go, I travel a lot even to different places. So I've seen schools outside of our county, and we definitely have a problem with equality and equity. I just wanted to remind you, as our board member, Mr. Burrows, said when we went to the training, one of the things that we were told, and it's so important that we listen to this, that equality and equity are two strategies we can use in an effort to produce fairness. Equity is giving everyone what they need to be successful, but equality is treating everyone the same. Equality aims to promote fairness, but it can only work if everyone start from the same place and need the same help. That is so important, and until we realize that in school system, we will continue to fail our kids. So thank you so very much for this.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. And colleagues, before we vote, I would make the observation. I attended a state Maryland Association of Boards of Education meeting a couple of days ago. And as you know, this policy is really in pursuance to a state requirement that all school systems have such a plan. So under the leadership of Mr. Wallace with this vote tonight, we will have achieved that. But other school systems in the state are far behind us. And so, Mr. Wallace, in addition to sharing this nationally, let's make sure that it's shared within the state, because I think it's a great model to demonstrate the leadership of this school district on this question. It's very important. I was told by Ms. Berkeley that we already voted on this, but to show our strong support on it, let's vote again. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The vote is unanimous. Colleagues, Dr. Golson, I will now ask for the introduction of, well, no, this new business first reader. I'll ask for an introduction of seven one, which is the Turning Point Academy. Please, Dr. Golson.
Yes, item seven point one under new business requires board approval as a first reader. No discussion required.
Thank you. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no.
Abstain.
I'm sorry, there's one no?
And one abstention.
And one abstention. One no, one abstention. Mr. Murray and Ms. Ahmed, thank you. There are no follow-up items from a work session of April the ninth. I will now receive a motion to approve action taken in executive session. I'm sorry?
We have to go back.
Oh, that's right. We do have to go back and continue in our executive session. But I want to approve, well, I guess we'll approve those at the next meeting. We'll approve those at the next meeting. We will now rejoin into executive session to continue executive session items. Thank you all, and good evening.